And we'll call the meeting of the Howard's Planning Board to order. It is Tuesday, March thirteenth at six thirty in the evening.
Actually, it's March twenty seventh.
Twenty seven.
March twenty, March twenty seventh on the correct agenda. And as a matter of record, as required by law, the town will be audio and video recording this meeting, and any person intended to either audio or video record this open session is required to inform the chair. Having said that, the first item on the agenda, and I'm moving this out of order because the town of Howard's Golf Course, the administrator has to go to another meeting of the Finance Committee at seven o'clock, so we'll move you up to the number one leadoff hitter.
Alan, but can I just make a statement? As you know, March thirteenth, we were closed due to the storm. We did repost and re notify all the abutters to this application, as well as the Thybert application, which will be coming up next. So we did reach out to everybody to let them know that it was rescheduled.
Gentlemen?
You do need to read it into the record, because it's never been read into the record.
Agenda, item 1B PB two thousand eighteen dash oh five, Town of Howard's Golf Course, as owner and applicant care of Chris Clark, Town Administrator, and Roman Greer, Director of Golf, as applicants. The application seeks approval of a site plan review special permit for a multi-phase project known as the Golf Infrastructure Revitalization Project. Specifically, the application is for the reconfiguration of the existing parking areas relative to the recently approved cart barn application granted under PB two thousand seventeen dash twenty-nine and related landscape features. The property is located at one hundred and eighty-three Oak Street, MAP sixty-one parcel H one, and more commonly known as Cranberry Valley Golf Course in the RR and WR zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section three twenty-five dash fifty-five, as such, forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section nine. Gentlemen, introduce yourselves and let's go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christopher Clark, Town Administrator, Alida Roman-Greer, Director of Golf.
Mike Kardosi, MLKardosi Design.
Thank you.
Just to quickly give a overview as to where we are, I was before the board earlier about having the cart barn. It has been, I think, delivered today.
Yes.
So we have it on site, so I appreciate the board's indulgence to let us go ahead and proceed with that part of the project, so we are underway in terms of it. At that meeting, I had committed to, within sixty days, submitting an application for the site plan itself and doing the landscape improvements. I think Mr. Kardosi actually had an opportunity to go through your comments last time that we were here. He incorporated those comments into the plan, and I have reviewed the staff report and then completed agreement, and would request that we receive favorable consideration on the application before the board. And if you would like, Mr. Kardosi, to go, take a few minutes to just go through the presentation, if you would like, we could certainly do that.
Feel free.
Okay. Want me to go through the whole thing again, or do you want me to just kind of go through the changes?
You can give us the highlights of that.
Just the highlights.
If there's any changes, mention that. Okay?
So, really, the changes from the last plan along the front here, there was some concerns about putting more pear trees, so I switched those up for a variety, for an upright bull tree, which would be good in front of the building here, and then also concerns with block area being visible from the parking lot, also kind of as you're driving by. So, we did an arborvitae hedge coming along here to help screen that out. Also, over in the storage area on this side, also planted that up as well with some other greens, to kind of help block that out and screen it from the parking lot, as guests are kind of leaving the site. I think that's really the only things that we're changing at a cart barn. And this front area, too, I kind of just called it in to kind of help show exactly, you know, this is the existing building here and here, and this is the existing asphalt line, kind of coming around here. So the plan really is to kind of widen this out, create some car parking, and also creating an entry and arrival area here for drop off, you know, your entry and a landing area with some seating that leads you into the front of the building, and also kind of create this little, you know, lawn space with finale trees that kind of leads you from the parking lot.
Can everybody in the audience see the, okay? I'm Charlene.
Um, one question I had first. I know that Amy Usowski had requested that three, no, excuse me, five eastern cedars be used instead of five arborvitae's on the side of the new cart barn. Has that been incorporated on the plans that we have? If not, certainly, that can be, and is that on the plans that we have? No, it still says arborvitae in our plan. I don't think that's a problem. I think we can just mark our plans that the board approves as being the red cedars rather than the arborvitae's. But really, other than that, I think when the town came before us at the previous meeting for the waiver, we had a very extensive overview of the entire project. As Mr. Clark said, the building has arrived, they're starting that work. I think that the suggestions that were made at that time for the landscaping have been taken to heart and have been included, and I think overall, it's a, it's a, it's a good plan that has been presented to the board.
Okay, and no outstanding issues?
No outstanding issues whatsoever.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Jim?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed that the applicant is requesting a whole number of waivers. And while, you know, in sort of a quick, you know, overview of the waivers that are being requested, I don't really see a major problem with any of them, but for the record, I would just like the applicant to, in a few words, state the rationale behind why he's requesting each waiver, and make it as brief as possible since there's so many of them.
Yeah, I would like to defer to Charlene, she's probably a little bit more familiar with the rationale.
And most of this information was actually filed in the waiver of site plan, plan.
Okay.
So it has been provided for in, on a previous plan. One of the items within the zoning compliance table is, this is a, how large is this property?
Hundred and eighty-five.
Hundred and eighty-five square foot, or a hundred and eighty-five acre parcel. Breaking down the, how much lot area and coverage and all that is really excessive.
Yeah, that's fine.
The setbacks clearly are well within the setback requirements because of where the buildings are positioned on the property in relation to lot lines, which are hundreds of feet away. So, a lot of this information had already been presented previously, and I just, I don't feel that it's necessary, not just because it's the town. If we had another large project like this, that has been kind of done in steps, I would have the same recommendation, that I don't have a problem with the waivers requested.
Okay, but I'd just like a very brief statement with regard to each waiver, so that we have it on the record of this meeting. And you gave it for the zoning compliance table. I assume that the size of the property, you know, is a factor in most of the other waivers that are being requested?
It is indeed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I just have a simple question. If one goes to play golf, and they're going to drop off their golf cart, is it going to be up in the parking lot or down below from the back?
So, the drop off is in this space here.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, you do need to use the microphone, I'm sorry, that was my bad.
Yeah, so the drop off area is actually on this side of the building here.
Which is?
Okay. And you're not concerned about the traffic coming and going in the parking lot?
The, I think that they're reconfiguring the drop off area for a new, a new entrance way from the eighteenth hole, rather than, rather than through the parking lot.
I think what the concept is, right now, where the, where the building is, the old cart barn, that you will no longer be able to kind of drive up and go through, you'll drive, and there's going to be a valet station where people will be brought, you know, pulled over, a place for someone to just greet you, and then they'll take the golf bags out and put them on the stands. So the cars should be a little bit separate, where people are going to drop off their equipment and then go park, versus the layout that is, exists now?
Are you talking about after the round of golf?
Yes.
After, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, there's still that, that traffic in the parking lot, there will be the same traffic there currently is, because people currently go to their cars to drop off their bags. There's going to be room at the west end of the cart barn for car return.
Which is right here, if you look, right there.
That's going to be a quick wash station, and there's going to be return for carts in front of the building, where there's not going to be parking.
So you're not going to come in from the back, you're going to come in from the front, from the parking lot side?
From the parking lot, yeah, on the, on the return from.
And if I can address one more time Mr. Atkinson's concern, if you look at the bottom of page two, with regard to items requested for waiver five through ten, there are detailed reasons why.
Okay, thank you.
From those.
Any other questions from members of the board? Any questions or comments from the audience?
Larry, I have a question.
Go ahead, David.
Obviously, the traffic pattern from what has been in the past is changing to prevent people from driving by the, all the way up.
David, we're having trouble hearing you.
All right, sorry. This is really more directed to Roman than anybody else, but it appears that the, the traffic pattern has been, will be changed from, from what has been in the past to driving through the area, but where the old cart barn was. It shows movable planters for emergency vehicles. Is that people from driving where we used to drive? Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
That's right.
In, in an emergency, how will those planters be moved?
So those are going to be planters on wheels that are just going to be, our staff will be able to push them out of the way to allow more emergency vehicles access to the golf, to the clubhouse.
Okay, it's, you know, if the fire department thinks this is okay, I'm certainly not going to object, but it just seems to be a bear that may, may be fairly important in a, in a real emergency.
The fire department has reviewed, and they did not express any concerns with that situation, so. It's not unusual, too, for the fire department, if they have to access those gates, sometimes you have to stop, open up a gate, so it's not unusual to have some, certain areas that are limited restrictions.
We have, on other occasions, required applicants to provide them with a key.
Right, in this case.
If you're going to lock a gate and they have to get through it, the applicant has to provide a key to the fire department.
That's right. In this case, there's not a gate, it's just they're available to roll them out of the way. I was just showing an example.
I understand.
Throughout other circumstances.
And just a reminder to the board that all votes need to be roll called, because Dave is remote.
Okay, having in case, if there's no further questions, we'll move to close the public.
Didn't ask the public.
Hmm?
Did you ask the public?
I did. Any, so we can close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McFarland, seconded by Mr. Atkinson, to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Joe?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Everybody voted in favor, it's unanimous?
You didn't ask David.
David, did you?
Hi.
Oh, okay, good, thank you. We'll start with you next. The public hearing is closed, so.
We have the following motion to have certain items waived pursuant to paragraph four hundred, Appendix four A. One, the marked areas subject to Wetlands Protection Act. Two, the drainage plan showing method for disposing of runoff from impervious.
Joe? One through four.
Turn the page over. Turn the page over.
Go. I asked.
Bottom of the page.
Okay, try again. Move to vote the, to approve the following waivers. To approve the waivers as requested based on the fact that the site is existing and additional information is not deemed necessary. One, zoning compliance table. Two, names, deeds, and plan references of abutters. Three, gross area of wetlands and uplands for total parcel. Four, drainage report submitted in prior submittal of waiver of site plan. Five, marked areas subject to Wetlands Protection Act. Six, drainage plan showing method for disposing of runoff from impervious surfaces. Seven, stopping site distance for all vertical curves and intersections. Eight, utility lines including water, electrical, and cable. Nine, lighting details. Ten, building plans.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll vote by roll call. David?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And yes for me, it will be unanimous. Joe?
Vote to adopt the proposed findings of fact. One, the parking areas are within the RR and W-dash-R zoning district and located off a long driveway off Oak Street. Two, the Oak Street entrance and driveway provide for adequate access and meet the minimum standards of the zoning code. Three, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water. Four, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water. Oops. Four, the use is existing and is consistent with the zoning code, and the reconfiguration and additional parking will not adversely affect the neighborhood or overall public good. Five, adequate and appropriate drainage exists, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicle or pedestrians. Six, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of this bylaw.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll call for a vote. David?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I vote yes, it's unanimous.
Move to approve with conditions, case number PB two thousand eighteen dash oh five, for the Town of Howard's Golf, care of Chris Clark, Town Administrator, and Roman Greer, Director of Golf, for a site plan review special permit pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's three twenty-five dash fifty-five, for a multiple, multi-phase project known as the Golf Infrastructure Revitalization Project, for the reconfiguration of the existing parking areas relative to the approved waiver of site plan for the cart barn, granted on a PB two thousand seventeen twenty-nine and related landscape features. Property is located at one eighty-three Oak Street, MAP sixty-one parcel H one, and is more commonly known as Cranberry Valley Golf Course in the RR and WR zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval, for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, and with the following conditions imposed relative to the site plan review. One, the plan and site work shall comply with all Board of Health and Conservation Commission requirements and reviews. Two, lighting shall conform to the zoning code. Three, the site plan special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, and four, any change to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. McFarland and Mr. Atkinson, and Mary, you have a question?
One question, do we need to require the change on the plan for the red cedar?
If the board is acceptable, I can just handwrite those changes?
I don't think, I mean, it's been a long time since we told, since we told people what kind of plants they're going to put in.
It was.
It's the conservation administrator who asked for it.
Well, let the Conservation Commission decide those things, then.
I know, but if it differs from what we have, then there's a conflict, so if we can have them being consistent.
We're amenable to the.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Having said that, that's the discussion, we will, if there's no further questions, we'll vote. David?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And yes, gentlemen, go build it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
It's been approved unanimously. The next item on the agenda is item one A, PB two thousand eighteen dash oh four, Thybert as applicant knowna. The application with waivers seeks the approval of a use special permit for detached accessory apartment pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, Section three twenty-five dash fifty-one dot H and Article five use regulations. The proposal seeks to construct a four hundred and seventy-two plus or minus square foot, one-bedroom dwelling unit above a one-bay garage. The property is located at one ninety-seven Follows Road, MAP sixty, parcel H three dash one in the RR zoning district. Sean, introduce yourself and tell us the story.
Senator, Mr. Chairman, I just want to make you aware, Mr. Tebner has done work at my house here in Howard, in Austin, Houston.
Did you pay him?
Yes, I did. I did, he did pay him, I just want to put that on, out there.
Okay, I don't think there's a conflict.
I don't believe that that would be a conflict.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, my name is Sean Tebner, I live at one ninety-seven Follows Road. I am in the process of building a thirty-foot by twenty-four-foot detached garage, and I am simply looking for permission to put a small apartment upstairs. It's just under five hundred square feet, one bedroom. The driveway will just kind of be an extension of my existing driveway, and, very simple. Any questions?
Okay. Charlene?
As Sean said, this is actually very simple. The Health Department just had the requirement that a second, two-component septic tank or an additional tank in a series will be required. I know that Sean's already been in conversation with Meg and the Health Director.
My engineers in the process of designing that right now.
Yeah, and because of the proximity to the lot line, the engineering department has just made the recommendation, and they're going to have to do this anyway, that the location be certified once it's in, and other than that, I have no comments.
We like simple. Any comments? Any comments from the board?
No comments.
No, we don't, no. Any comments from the general public? We like simple. Hearing no comments in the public, we could close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we will vote. David?
Hi.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes for me, it will be unanimous. Okay, and the next vote? Joe?
Move to approve a waiver pursuant to four hundred dash six of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not, that are not applicable to this petition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Mr. McFarland and Mr. Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll vote. David?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And yes for me, it's unanimous.
Move to approve the findings of fact as follows. One, parcel is in the R-dash-R zoning area. Two, the apartment union is not greater than nine hundred square feet, being four hundred and seventy-two plus or minus square feet. Three, it is the owner's intent to continue to reside and occupy the main dwelling on the property. Four, minimum requirements have been met for setback area in bulk. Five, the driveway and garage will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements. Six, the application as submitted does not adversely affect local traffic or create traffic hazards, as in three twenty-five dash fifty-one H two.
Second.
Moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. David?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I vote aye, so it's unanimous.
Move to approve with conditions the use special permit and waivers for Sean Tebner for a detached four seven, four hundred and seventy-two plus or minus square foot, one-bedroom accessory apartment above a garage pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard's three twenty-five dash fifty-one H and Article five use regulations. Property is located at one ninety-seven Follows Road, MAP sixty parcel H three dash one in the R-dash-R zoning district. The approval is based on the fact that the application meets necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Howard, with the above findings and the following conditions. One, the owner shall maintain occupancy in one of the units as required by the Town Code. Two, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Three, any changes to the plan shall be subject to the further planning board review.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Now, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will vote. David?
Yep.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And yes for me, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for coming, good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the, on the agenda is a public hearing, zoning, zoning bylaw article, large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, how do we spell it? To see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaw by establishing a new article, the Latin twenty-three, large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays with less than two hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Greater than two hundred and fifty.
Greater than two hundred and fifty, with detailed requirements. A map change to create an overall district and add the use to Table one use regulations. Full text is available on the posted notice and at www.howich.mass.gov backslash planning board. And Charlene, you?
Take it away. The board did see this about a month ago or more. The town is looking to become a green community, be designated as a green community, and one of those requirements is to create a bylaw that would allow for an as-of-right citing for renewable energy, and we felt that the large ground-mounted photovoltaic arrays, we need a zippy acronym for that, was in, was an appropriate way to go for this. So what this does is it creates criteria for the, for filing, it creates a purpose and intent. I'm not going to go into detail on any of these unless somebody wants me to. It's going to create definitions, as of site writing, designated location, large-scale ground-mounted photovoltaic, large-scale solar array, onsite solar photovoltaic installation, rated nameplate capacity, solar photovoltaic array. It creates a review process similar to our site plan review called large-scale solar review. In that, there is a compliance with the laws, ordinances, and regulations. There is also a large-scale review application and plan requirements, and it goes through what all the requirements are for when you actually submit a site plan for this. You can call it a site plan, it's the large-scale solar review plan. It is virtually the same as you would see for a site plan review, but it's not a use special permit. It's a by right, but it does need to go through all of this criteria and be reviewed by the planning board. There are, you, the applicant can request waivers of certain requirements upon written request stating why. They are required to submit an operations and maintenance plan, they are required to submit utility notification, you need to be able to plug into the grid, so to speak, in order to be able to do a large-scale photovoltaic array. There are dimensional and density requirements, we have setback requirements, and then the appropriate structure, there are certain requirements for that. There are also some design standards specifically for lighting and signage. We can, we will not allow any, you know, shop-it bobs or any kind of thing like that. There needs to be safety signage and things like that. There needs to be the utility connection. There is a safety and environmental standards requirement, emergency services, how land is going to be cleared, the erosion, the habitat that might be impacted. There's a monitoring and maintenance that needs to be submitted along with this. There are requirements that if it's going to be abandoned or decommissioned, certain specific things that they have to do to ensure that it doesn't just sit there as a wasteland. There are certain things that would need to be done. There need to be financial sureties to, that we know that this is going to be a viable project. This also creates, within the establishment of zoning district under Article 3, it creates a new overlay district called solar farm overlay district. It also creates a solar farm overlay district map, which the map is shown up on the, the...
Excuse me?
The slide, if anybody's interested. And you also do have one in your packet. This is directly west of the existing solar farm that exists at the Cap landfill off of Queen Anne Road. We are looking to put this solar farm overlay district on town property, so it would be a town-sponsored project. So we might be able to get a little money out of this. If at some time in the future, this wanted to be expanded to allow for this type of use on private property, that's something that could be looked at. But right now, we're only proposing that it be on town property in this location. We only needed one acre for this overlay district. We actually, in looking at the map and, and looking at the uses, discovered that we could actually have almost nine acres, 8.87 acres, available for future solar farm, for lack of a better word. So if there's any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them. We also have Larry Cole, who is a member of the Energy Committee. He's in the audience in case, you know, he would like to speak or he can answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions from the members of the board? Joe?
Who owns the property between the proposed area and Queen Anne Road?
Right there? There's a variety of different owners in there.
And do we have those?
I'm sure I can find them, but it, they're, like I said, there's a, there are several different owners in that area.
Were they notified of this?
Uh, no, they're not required to be notified by law.
I, I, I think they should be.
That's commercial law.
It, it's industrial zoned. If at the time we discussed it previously, if I had known that was the wishes, we would have notified them. But at this point, I mean, there's nothing in Mass General Law or the whole zoning process that requires that we notify a butters only if somebody has submitted to the town clerk a request to be notified of zoning changes. And it's been advertised.
It's been advertised, and one thing that I think may also be helpful with regard to that identification, this will have to be approved by town meeting.
Yes, it will.
So there'll be a discussion at town meeting, it will be in the warrant. And I'm assuming, and correct me if I'm wrong, Charlene, that the plan showing the area will be within the warrant?
Oh, absolutely, yes. It is in the warrant. And this is strictly on town property, and it would require a 50-foot setback from all property lines.
So with all that type of public notice, you know, I can understand why there was not a requirement to notify the director butters.
And there never is for zoning amendments.
Yeah, it's going through a very public process.
Any further questions?
I have nothing from them.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Step right up.
Not a question, just a little clarification. As Charlene pointed out, this is one of five criteria that the town needs to satisfy to become a green community. And the advantages to becoming a green community is we become eligible for funding from the state to make energy efficiency improvements, which will lead to reducing the amount that we spend on energy. There are three ways we could have satisfied this criterion. The parcel could have been set aside for manufacturing renewable energy projects, producing renewable energy, or doing R and D in renewable energy. And what the town has applied for, the large solar array, makes sense not only because it's adjacent to the existing array, and one of the considerations with somebody doing a business on this parcel is interconnection with ever-source, the grid. And some of that's already there because of the solar array that we have, the municipal project. So one of the possible uses, for example, a developer could decide to create something called a solar community garden, produce power, and then sell it to whoever wants to buy it along Queen Anne Road or wherever. Once they're plugged into the grid, customers can be anywhere. And presumably would be, the town would, there would be a lease from the town of the land, so it's a source of income. So, and, so there are practical reasons besides it being a good thing to do.
And it, and it will be underground. It will be underground.
Underground, yes. No, I'm not suggesting wind turbines at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other questions?
Larry, just a question. I, I think I understand. What we're talking about proposing to change here is town property.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is strictly on town property.
On the far end of the dump.
On the west side of the existing solar array. I mean, literally, the existing solar array is right here.
Yep.
It's all in there.
It's on top of the hill.
I know.
Any other questions from the audience? Want to close the public hearing?
Do you need that? Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved and seconded by Mr. McCarland and Mr. Atkinson to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we will vote. David?
Aye.
Jim? Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative, so it is unanimous.
I don't think I gave you a motion on this one. My apologies, but the motion would be to accept the article and to recommend it to the town meeting.
That's what I said.
He did, I heard him.
Well, if that's what you're saying, that's what I'm going to second.
Okay. Thank you very much, Charlene.
Just make sure the minutes end.
So we have to vote on that?
I have Joe and Jim, except the article and recommending down in meeting.
We're going to vote on the, oh, we vote on the motion now? Motion you just made?
Yes.
To accept it and forward it to public hearing. Having said that, Mr. McCarland made the motion, Mr. Atkinson seconded it.
Yes.
And is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll put it to a vote. David?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I'll vote in the affirmative, it's unanimous. Thank you. Onto the next item on the agenda, which would be public meeting. New business. PB 2018-08, Ms. Ladue. Eastwood MVT LLC and trust owner Susan Ladue, Eastwood Companies representative.
Does anybody want a bigger plan to look at? With the grid and the open space?
What are you going to do if I say yes, Charlene?
You're visually challenged on this one, David.
Sorry, David.
Okay, and, um, we're worried. The proposal seeks approval of a 10-lot preliminary subdivision plan with eight buildable lots, one reserved lot and one open-space lot pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich. Chapter 400, Article 2, is set forth in Mass General Law, Chapter 41, 88K, dash through GG. The property is located at 1546 and 1522 Orleans Road, MAP 97 parcel B2-1, and a portion of 97 slash B2-2 respectively in the RR and WR zoning district and the Pleasant Bay watershed. Ladue.
Good evening. Susan Ladue from Eastwood Companies, and I have David Clark from Clark Engineering with me also, who prepared the plan. I was here a month ago, and you signed the A&R plan dividing the total property into two lots. And now I'm back with the eight-and-a-half-acre parcel, and we're dividing that into eight lots. And I should explain, we submitted a grid subdivision with typical grid lots, and I believe that meets the requirements of the zoning bylaw. And it's eight lots, 40,000-square-foot lots, a minimum of 150 feet of frontage. I believe we have one panhandle lot, and the road is about 800 feet long. And we also submitted an open-space subdivision plan that I believe we are not going forward with at this time. You're exciting. So I don't think we're really going to be discussing that at, at any length with you. We, David went to Board of Health last week? Or two weeks ago? Two weeks ago.
Last week.
Was it last week?
Yep.
And they approved the plan, and I think, I believe they looked at the open-space plan too at the time, because they had both. But we are going with the eight-lot grid plan. And I'm not sure there's much more other than, I believe the town departments gave you some correspondence, and the police department, I believe, as they usually do, they want to make sure that site distance is, is looked at and is appropriate. And we believe that it will be. And, other than that, I believe there are no other concerns. Have any other comments?
The road will meet all the requirements of the bylaw. The regulations will not be asking for any waivers.
Okay, Charlene?
I'm actually glad they're going with the grid plan. I was not overly fond of the open-space plan, and, and they both knew it. We actually sat down and, and reviewed this. Most of my, my questions or comments that I had had as staff actually pertain to the, the cluster subdivision, the open-space subdivision. So I really don't have a lot. A couple of things. The Board of Health did meet on the 19th? And I did forward to you comments that they have regarding that. The Board of Health will not consider any variances from Title 5 or Harwich Board of Health regulations. The subdivision will be served by town water. In order to prepare for any connections to the sewer, a sewer line will exit the building on the side of the street. And prior to the consideration of definitive subdivision and environmental impact report in accordance with the Board of Health regulations, 2-point, or 1.211 will be required to be submitted to the Board of Health. Other than that, I really don't have anything else on this.
Okay. If you don't do, any of the members of the board have any questions? Jim?
Just a minor comment. I'd just like to sort of echo Charlene's comments with regard to the, the two plans that you submitted. I also had a lot of concerns with regard to the open-place, open-space plan, and I'm glad that you've decided to go with the other plan.
Okay, any other comments? Joe?
Did you comply with the, with the police, their comment in your entranceway in terms of sightlines and so forth? They, which they always do, point out that there needs to be appropriate line of sight at the entrance exit of the project for those entering or exiting. Did you, have they seen this, or has some of the police seen this?
Police reviewed this plan. When they come in with the definitive, they will be sure to make sure that all...
Complies, that's my, that's my only concern.
Yeah, I think it already does. But they will double-check that when they file for the definitive, I'm sure.
Okay.
And just to satisfy my curiosity with anything, this, right out at the entranceway, where it says on, at least the plan that I'm looking at, it says Route 39. Is that part of a septic setup? That looks like a...
Oh, that is a drainage area. So the idea is, we have to comply with the Massachusetts stormwater standards. They prefer infiltration through naturalized areas to get the most effective treatment of the stormwater. So we, we will be collecting the stormwater in the street and piping it to a detention area alongside the roadway, which will be vegetated with plantings so that it won't look like a pond. It will look like a, a naturalized area that entraps stormwater when needed. Same with the next set of catch basins between Lot 3 and 8. We're proposing...
I see them, yep.
We're proposing to capture the 25-year storm event, and then anything greater than that would be piped to a swale where you see that 70-foot contour. There's a natural depression along the property line between Lot 8 and the lot that was created last time we were here. So the idea is that low spot would take care of 100-year storm event. So the Massachusetts stormwater policy requires that we control stormwater all the way up to 100-year storm event. So the local bylaw requires only 25, so we will achieve that with the typical detention basins. But anything greater than that will go to detention areas on the property so it doesn't get out to neighbors or out under the street.
And one last question. There's apparently two wooden structures on that lot as you go in on the left.
Yes.
What are those?
An existing house and garage. They are on their own lot. That's, and that's the reason why we did the division a month ago, the A&R plan with you, so that they are on their own lot.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. What name do you want?
We love Wilder Way. No, not at all. Wilder Way is our, our first choice.
Wilder Way, okay.
Think of two others yet?
Oh, yeah. We have two others.
Last chance.
No, thank you.
Okay, we can, let's see, that's a public meeting, this isn't a public hearing, is it? No. Okay, um, Joe?
I move to approve the preliminary plan entitled Preliminary Grid Subdivision for 1522 Orleans Road, Route 39, East Harwich, Mass. I'm sorry. Prepared for Eastwood Homes Business Trust, prepared by Clark Engineering LLC and Terry A. Warner PLS, dated 1/26/2018, scale 1 to 60, subject to the issues raised by all town departments.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McCarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative, making it unanimous.
I know the boy, a name out of our past, Terry Warner.
All set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much, have a good night.
Thanks.
The next item on the agenda is PB 2018-10. John E. Peanut, owner applicant, James Stinson Esquire. Representative seeks approval for two lot and approval not required plan pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81P. The property is located at 0 Main Street, MAP 38, parcel G3-2, and is shown as a plan entitled Plan of Land in Harwich, Massachusetts, as prepared for John Peanut, prepared by Twister Engineering, Robin Woolcox, Public Land Surveyor, dated March 5, 2018. The parcels are in an RL zoning district. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney James Stinson, I appear for John Peanut. This is a division of property, it's not a subdivision because it's not creating any new... new roads or ways. It is an existing five-acre tract, it's being divided into one four-acre parcel and one one-acre parcel, both of which have sufficient frontage in that zoning district, which is 150 feet. Five acre, excuse me, the four-acre lot is going to have frontage of approximately 214 feet, and the one acre, you know, one-plus acre parcel is gonna have about 224 feet. The minimum lot size is 100, is 40,000 square feet, we have well over that for each lot. The purpose of this division of land is to solve a title problem, there are cross claimants for the property. One claims title, pot client, Mr. Pena, by virtue of good record title, whereas the Westalia Butter has used and occupied the property pursuant to a plan that was drafted about 20, 25 years ago for the cranberry bogs. This will, this is a compromise after the approval of the swap deeds on the parcels, and that'll render title good, clear, record, and marketable. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but.
Okay, any questions? Oh, Charlene, sorry.
I have no questions.
Do you have any comments?
Health did review this, we got a, a letter from them, and just that, for future information, compliance with Regulation 1.211 required proposing to have a septic flow of over 2,000 gallons per day on property, no variances will be approved. So that's more for information, you can't condition an approval not required plan. But other than that, it meets all the necessary requirements for endorsement as an approval not required plan.
Okay, any comments from the board?
What does that 2,000 thing mean? I, I read it, you emailed it to us.
When you have a larger tract that can hold a development that would create a septic use of over 2,000 gallon, 2,000 or more gallons per day, it triggers another review before the Board of Health and requires perhaps denitrification, but I'm not entirely sure.
When I read it, I mean, it sounded to me like that would apply, or that type of situation would apply to a commercial piece of property.
Potentially, could the, the preliminary subdivision you just saw actually triggers that? So they will have to go through that provision of the Board of Health regulations. So if this parcel, because of its size, develops further and creates a flow of that magnitude, they're gonna have to do the same thing that the previous one we just saw, which is environmental notification, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
And you're okay with that, counsel?
Yes, we've run that by our engineer and he was aware of that, and he said it's not gonna create a problem. If you, of course, if you built five-bedroom houses, you're gonna have a problem, but if you have three-bedroom houses, it shouldn't be a problem.
You're gonna end up with one lot that's about 42,000 square feet.
Right.
And one lot.
Almost four acres.
It's over four acres.
Right.
But that's because a lot of it's what, right?
Well, it's, a lot of it's cranberry bog, and he uses that for sand mining for the, for the bogs. So his property is gonna stay, well, he can do whatever he wants to do with it, build a house if he wants, but it's gonna stay essentially the same devoted to agriculture use as cranberries. And, you know, we didn't need a bigger parcel, it sort of fit nicely in the area that we wanted, and it was part of the compromise we reached.
Thank you.
Are there, any other questions from the board? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote.
Vote, vote to adopt that said plan does not constitute a subdivision as the way shown on a plan, a public way slash town road provides safe and adequate access.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? David?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I vote in the affirmative, unanimous.
Motion to endorse the A and R plan entitled Plan of Land in Harwich, Massachusetts, as prepared for John Pena, prepared by Switzer Engineering, Robin Wilcox, PLS, dated March 5, 2018, scale 1 to 40.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. David?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Yes for me, it's unanimous. Is that, counsel, thank you very much, sorry to keep you so long.
Not a problem, thank you. The last showed me.
Oh, wait, you got the sign.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you about that.
Sorry about that.
I always like the way they all, it's almost like they're all fresh. Just the one perk of an A and R plan, you walk out with it, hopefully.
And if I could also get just three of the paper copies done, just for our files, I forgot to do that the last time we did an A and R, and I was chastised for it, really so.
Last time I did one of these, I took it to the registry and they said the ink ran, so they wouldn't accept it. Back to the engineer.
Yeah, that's fine, it doesn't matter what color you do that in.
I'm in order.
Yep.
What do we do? We adopt the minutes? We move to adopt the following minutes of date each year.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
3/9.
March 9.
You got it at the same time.
The bonus question? You have to write your signature.
One, two, three, four.
I can't believe that they don't teach it anymore, I really can't.
You'd be surprised how many kids, so one of the things I do is I try to teach them, gotcha. Bare minimum, you should be able to write your name.
Yeah, I agree.
Half the kids got it? Like they, they tried by.
This has to be signed in black, Charlie?
They can't read the Constitution, and they can't read the Declaration.
India ink.
You can do those in.
As long as it's not disappearing ink.
I'm slowly.
Showing your age.
Yeah. Good thing I'm not failing it.
Good.
People don't teach it anymore. I'm surprised when my, when my nieces and nephews and they didn't learn.
Bernie Kilroy spoke with Mr. Paul.
I think that myself.
Yeah.
There was a time when we had to sign in black or they wouldn't record it.
No, no, these are paper, these are for us.
Okay.
These don't go to the registry. These are just for our files. This one, you gotta do in black.
Used to be a obligatory pittograph.
Oh, God, remember those? You had to shake them for pittograph?
Yeah, it makes a difference.
I just found my old ones from college. I threw them away.
Did you?
Oh, they were destroyed.
Didn't make any difference, all the ink would have been crystallized.
They were all crusty and bad.
Here you go. Here you go. I don't wanna hold you here.
It's all right.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes.
Move to, move to adopt a review and approve the minutes of January 9, 2018, January 23, 2018, February 13, 2018, and February 27, 2018. You all should have got a copy.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McFarland and seconded by Mr. Atkinson. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? David?
I'm trying to abstain on the ones that I was not, where I did not attend.
Okay.
I vote aye on the others.
Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes to all.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I will also vote in the affirmative, accepting the meetings that I was not here at.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, do we need to get from David the one, the one minute?
I can tell by the meeting.
Oh, okay.
By the minutes, yeah.
So as long as we know.
Yeah.
Okay, that being the case, the next item on the agenda would be old business. Is there any old business we haven't brought up? Okay? Charlene?
I just wanted to bring up, I went before the Finance Committee last Thursday night regarding the marijuana bylaws, just to let you know, they voted not to support the ban, the outright ban, both the general bylaw and the zoning bylaw. They did vote to support the, the extension of the moratorium, and they are working on, as we speak, over at the Community Center, apparently, an amendment to the time, place, and manner special permit bylaw. I did speak to the chairman, our chairman, Mr. Brophy, this afternoon. We will put it on the next agenda for discussion in the event that they do vote to change it, so if you all want to discuss it to decide which way you wanna go, if you wanna go anywhere with it, you'll have it on the agenda.
And, and I, I mentioned to Charlene, it was in the Times today that, Falmouth, was it Falmouth? I think it was.
No, Bourne.
Bourne, I'm sorry, Bourne had some difficulties with it and effectively negated everything and taken it to the town meeting, and I, it's happened in a couple of other town meetings, so we best be prepared for that eventuality.
I, I did make it.
We'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes.
If needed.
I, I did make it clear at that meeting that if there is nothing in place, that the retail sale of recreational marijuana would be allowable anywhere that retail sales are allowed, so.
Okay.
Just letting you know. No discussion, just, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, any other, no, any other old business? Briefings and reports by the board members, we can, Mary, anything for us?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Jim?
Nothing to report.
No.
Giuseppe? Nothing. Ellen?
No.
We should, I think, just, you know, review the ZBA.
Yeah, that was in your packet as well.
Yep.
Advisory opinion.
And the, I'm sorry, you're right, the advisory opinion is, does anybody have any comments on the ZBA?
Agenda.
Agenda for March 28.
I have none.
None.
I, I should represent, I read it, and I have none.
I, so if, if nobody has any comments on it, David, have you, do you have any comments for the?
Could you report on the weather?
No, I don't wanna hear a report on the weather.
We don't wanna hear that.
You want the report on the weather, it was 44 degrees with a kind of an icy wind at the golf course today.
I'd appreciate, Larry, if you would sign the card for David for me? So my name will be on it?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
I planned on it already, David. Full name. Okay, anything else that we should bring before the board? Hearing none?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by everybody, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Roll call, I'm sorry, David?
Aye.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes for me? Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.